Good evening, everyone. Buenos tardes. We are going to start our board meeting in just a few minutes.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hi, I see Magdalena, Emily, Bob Keough getting on. Hi, Delly Ness. David will be back in just a moment and we have a couple members of the public here. Welcome. Welcome Daisy, Lauren, and Melody. And David Estrada, welcome. Good to see you again. We're gonna have to step up our Hawaiian shirt game. If this is if this is where you're setting the bar.
Bless I can get. I want your lens. You look like a newscaster. You're like, it's all it's all nice and blurry in the background and well lit.
I need all the help I can get. Let me tell you. Hello, Charles. Hi Gabrielle. All right.
Hi, can you guys hear me through the mask?
Yes.
Okay, I am, I had to come to my office today to onboard our new newest employee. So, and my boss and my, those people are still using my conference room. So I'm in the common space of a coworking space. So I have to keep this mask on. Can't hear me, just let me know. And my wifi here isn't great. So if I can switch into the other room, I definitely will.
Okay.
You all, hi.
It's, it's been a year of figuring things out. So why should we close the year any differently?
Why stop now?
Yeah. Great. Well, I think that we can get started.
Yeah, everybody that we definitely have a forum. I'll address in a couple of minutes later. Tremendous worse. So I'm gonna see if I can get it back in as soon as possible. Okay. Anybody all, this is our June meeting. Thanks for coming. And we'll start again by the routine business of just going through the agenda. Do we have any members of the public here? Any family members?
Yes, we have three LEAP family members here.
Okay, great. Well, thank you and for coming, as always. Let's go ahead and dive right in. Our first M of routine business is, well, let me call, I'll call meeting. We're at 6:05. We have a forum. Sort of business is to approve the agenda that was sent out last week. Thank you very, very much, Michael, to sending all of those out on my behalf. All of the documents that we have. Does anybody have any edits to the meeting agenda? Looks like no. Okay, great. Make a motion then to adopt the meeting minutes as written. May I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Favor?
Hi.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Okay, second order of routine business is approving the minutes from the May meeting. Does anyone have any edits to those? Looks like no. Okay, great. Then I will make a motion to approve the May minutes as written. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Hi. All right, minutes approved. Okay, so then we will go into new business and I will turn that over to Michael and the team.
Thank you. And by the way, I want to I want to shout out Charles, who has been going into more depth in the minutes than we had done in the past. I think that that will bear fruit in the future when we're going back to read the notes of a discussion. He's, he's laid it out nicely there. And I see a thumbs up from Gabrielle. I'd like to continue the practice from last month. Not reiterate every single thing that was in our written updates, but I hope everyone did have a chance to read because there's a lot going on. From facility planning to survey results, getting ready for next year hiring. And so you'll find a lot of detail there. But I do want to call out a few highlights. One is, just in case you were wondering, we do continue to project 100% enrollment. Our waitlist is actually up a little bit versus where we were a month ago. And so it's, it's really exciting to be able to plan for that. And, and you know, obviously, we have to continue to engage our families. We will have some summer events coming up for incoming families and things like that. But we're grateful to have the demand, especially in a year when a lot of schools are having a harder time with, with enrollment. I'm happy to say that we have completed our leadership team for next year. And I'll give an overview, but Delly Ness, please feel free to chime in. We have a terrific group of instructional leaders. In addition to Delly Ness and our vice principal Joanna, we have three deans of instruction. Our returning deans, Diana and Tiara, as well as new dean of instruction, Graciela Walker, who's joining us, who has many, many years of school leadership experience. Including as a principal, an assistant principal, a director of culture. Including as an ESL director. She also has experience at the at the Ascend Network. So we're glad to have another person with a lot of experience joining this team. And we're just really excited about the support that they're going to be able to provide our teachers. We are also making good progress and nearly complete when it comes to hiring in general for the year. So you will see in the pre reads, a pretty detailed breakout of our hiring progress. That was a chart that we had shared with the education committee this month. And just tried to visualize a little bit more effectively what the plan is for the upcoming year, as well as which roles were still open. So we are still hiring for at least one special education teacher, for a social worker. And for a couple of additional teaching roles. But the picture is coming together nicely, as it should be, because after a little bit of a break, we'll come back and our leadership team will be getting ready for training. And we want to spend that month of July getting ready for training instead of finishing up hiring. Delly Ness, would you like to add anything to this update?
No, I, we're really excited with the new leaders that we have at the school. Already just really planning for next year, Summer Institute. Working on a Leadership Institute for our leaders as well, which is really exciting. And it's wonderful to have them. I think that we're already in comparison to next year. Really just ahead of the curve and in planning for, for next year. And I'm really excited for all of the amazing things to come with all of the extra new help in hand. I feel like there's a lot we can accomplish. So very excited to welcome these new leaders to the school community.
I'd also like to share that we've hired one additional leader to the operations team. We extended an offer to a gentleman named Matthew Padilla, who is an experienced director of operations, who spent the last few years at the Success Academy Charter School Network. Matthew is joining us in the role. He was going to be at a more senior role in that network. But we're excited to welcome him as senior director of operations at LEAP Academy. He's going to be working with our founding director of operations, Maida Torres, who's really laid the foundation and helped get a team ready. But we know that there's so much complexity and growth and state testing and other kinds of operational work to be done in the year ahead that we thought it was important to invest in, in some expertise and some experience to complement the terrific talent that we already have. So our staff just learned about this today, but we'll be introducing Matthew. He'll be joining us next week in the building. So all around, we're pleased with the squad that's coming together for, for next year. Any questions so far?
I just want to say, that seems like a great outcome, Michael. Congratulations. I, when I used to be a journalist, I wrote a couple of, bunch of stories about Success Academy and whatever you think about the network. And where they serve the, the neediest kids, their operations team is always outstanding. And I mean, that is a well-oiled machine. So that seems like a great hire.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited about it. And I really do want to underscore that we're, we're doing our best to make sure that that every team member understands that this is a journey of growth and it's all a positive sum game. So the, the more we add experienced leaders, the more we can accelerate the progress of everybody in the organization as we think to the future, future grades, future schools, and so on.
So happy you found a role for Myra too, who's worked so hard these past few years. And that's, that seems like just a wonderful.
Might as, might as a super valued member of our team. And we're, we're really looking forward to, to her continued leadership with us. And thank you for saying that. Good. Well, I, I, I know there was a interest among the board about some of the details. And I'm sure among families about some of the details of what's coming up next year. We had a nice workshop with our families this past weekend where we, we shared some highlights that this board was already aware of. Our plans to return to recess, our plans to be all in person. And some of the investments we're making in intervention and an instructional leadership and taking over the after school program. That's all news to you guys. But we did want to take the opportunity to share a bit of an update because things changed quickly. And of course, even today, there's new press releases coming out. So we're always we're always trying to keep tabs on what our prospects are in terms of safety and logistics. So first, to the point of COVID safety. As far as I can tell, with the excitement, the fireworks around our state reaching 70% vaccination rates and a number of restrictions being lifted. The, that news is only a few hours old, but as far as we can tell, there's no immediate impact for schools. A couple of weeks ago, there was a bit of back and forth in terms of what the state was going to, to adjust. They ended up adjusting the rule about masks being required outdoors. So the current guidance is that masks are not required when students are, and adults are outdoors. But no other changes have really come down yet. As of now, masks are still required indoors even for vaccinated adults in schools. At least three feet of social distance is required unless you have some kind of shield in place. And so that's the configuration we're gonna, you know, continue for the rest of this school year. But I think it's quite likely that we will see adjustments looking ahead to the fall from our state and local health authorities. And I think that that's, I think it's, it's right for us to be thinking about loosening up. But thankfully, it's not on me. It's on folks who have more of a public health background. But as I told our families this weekend, and we told our families this weekend, we will be, you know, monitoring that closely and trying to follow, you know, best practice as it, as it evolves. And hopefully it will not be too long before it can really feel like we're, we're back to normal. I, I got a couple of, of questions that I know there was interest in, you know, some of the logistics of how our current facility is going to accommodate our expanded enrollment. We, of course, designed the current facility for for K through three. That was the layout that was created there. And at the same time, it's been nice to have extra room to, to be able to, to spread out into the building with some smaller class sizes. So it's clear that our class sizes will be returning for nor, to normal for the new year. They're not uniform. They vary a little bit based on whether a given classroom is an ICT or not, and which grade level it's in, and what our enrollment is, and those different grade levels. In particular, our third grade cohort next year, it will continue to be our, our smallest cohort. And that's helpful because they're the, they're the biggest kids. So they could use a little bit of extra room. But for this, this year, when we're bringing everyone into the building, including new kindergarten students and returning students from remote classrooms. We've been thinking through what that footprint looks like. And we, it's still not going to be ideal. We're still going to need to continue our meals in classrooms for at least one more year. And we're also going to have to have some of our expanded special subjects team be teaching on a push-in basis. So bringing music, bringing art, bringing science to the different homerooms rather than having a designated classroom for those. We've talked before about the need to, to go nearby for, for outdoor recess. And that is still very much our plan. But you know, we still don't have a full gymnasium within the building. And so we'll be making do with a regular classroom there. By and large, though, with a little bit of creative thinking and having some of the adult leaders who are not classroom teachers sharing some offices together in a deliberate way. We believe that we can make it work for this year. And so I don't want to go too far into the weeds, but I thought it was worth kind of giving a little bit of a preview of how that might work. So we'll continue to have our second floor be the home base for kindergarten. That's where we built our couple of classrooms that share a bathroom. The way that our front office is configured will adjust a little bit as the team adjusts. But this, this floor is, is pretty straightforward. When we go up to our third floor, we will continue to use our former cafeteria here as, as a classroom. I have been sitting with a couple of colleagues upstairs in what will become a classroom. So I'll be moving back down to this L-shaped office. And we'll have our grade one team here along with our instructional deans who will share an office and our vice principal. Because she also has a culture and behavior duties, she'll, she'll need her own office. And sometimes we'll have to have have a student with her. And then finally, our, our fourth floor. We, the, this is not final. And we're still thinking about a couple of possible swaps. But essentially, our grades two and three, our PE and our dance will have designated classrooms. And then we'll also use a couple of our smaller classrooms. One of which is currently for intervention and another is currently for art. We're going to use these for our student supports and student services team. So our counselor, our social worker, our interventionists, our sets, a special education teacher will sort of have a home base where we can have IEP meetings. We can pull small groups of students for intervention. And then we'll continue to have our room for special service providers. And then we've been, you know, using some of the common areas to also pull small groups of students for intervention, such as this common area here on the fourth floor. And then we're going to make some creative reuse of the mezzanine area to add some more flexible office space and to relocate our staff lounge and workroom. If you haven't been in this space in a while, we actually had a couple of board sessions up here once upon a time in the before times before COVID. But this space has, you know, some potential to be used for offices as it, as it has been this past year. So that's a very quick overview. Again, I just emphasize, we know that it's going to be tight. But we think with some very, very careful planning, we can make sure that, you know, those, those health guidelines are honored in every classroom, that there aren't any exceptions to that. And that the intervention that we've planned for, that we have enough designated places for that to happen. Delly Ness, I'm sure I've forgotten some points here. Do you have anything to add?
I don't think you, you did miss anything. Um, we, we have another RTI room on the second floor as well, because that is a, a big team there. So we'll have some interventionist housed on the second floor and then the rest of the team housed here on the fourth floor. And as Michael stated, art, music, and science will be pushing in into the classrooms to conduct their, their classes.
Any questions?
Yeah, has the new ops person had a chance to look through these plans yet? Or are we planning to share? Is that kind of his first order of business?
One of them, yeah. Yeah, most definitely. Okay, I will keep moving. But if, if anybody wants to discuss this offline, be happy to do that. And the same goes for any of the, any of the families that are either on the line now or maybe viewing this later. We shared in the pre reads a little overview of the family survey. We, we are happy to still see an overwhelming share of our families saying that yes, they would recommend the school to another family. 99%. So, you know, we want to get it back to 100%, but of course, that, that means a lot to us because that's kind of a nice gut check question to understand folks' overall feelings. That being said, there's a lot of detailed data in there that we're looking at, both in terms of the standardized questions that come from the panorama education folks, where we can compare our responses to the national norms. And also in the specific comments that our families have shared with us. In general, we, we get high marks in our school climate, in the school safety. We feel like a warm and welcoming place for families. I think that a lot of the room to improve has to be interpreted in light of what this year has meant for us on a practical level. You know, there, there were even questions about like, how often do you, you know, do you go into your child's classroom? Well, you know, that wasn't really allowed. But I do think that the lower scores in a couple of these areas show some areas where we can, we can really focus in the year ahead. We talked with our families over the weekend about, for example, increasing those connections between families. So it's great if you hear from your teacher or you hear from the administration of the school. But are we fostering a sense of community? Are we creating organizational opportunities to get involved? And to share information? And so that's, that's something. And then, you know, there's also some interesting data in there about what, what the survey refers to as home learning behaviors. But really, it's about, you know, reading at home, doing homework at home, you know, excitement about schoolwork and things like that. And I think that our instructional team, you know, will be unpacking that and thinking about what we can do to foster that homeschool connection even better. So, you know, we're, we're appreciative of all the families who took this survey. We are not just taking that 99%. There's a lot of detailed information in there. And it's really helpful to read the comments. And many parents shared their ideas for specific areas of improvement. And, and also said really nice things. And so, you know, if it was just, hey, I love LEAP, like, we love to hear that. And if it was, you know, I've noticed something that could be better, you know, that's also really helpful.
Questions? What, in terms of proportion of parents who responded, do you know that offhand? I don't know if it's like one per household or, you know, how it overall compares.
So the overall response rate, we had a majority. David?
Oh, no, I just said, sorry for my daughter.
Oh, sorry. That's a good question. I haven't looked at the breakdown of how many households. And it's an anonymous survey, so we don't really get access to sort of demographics or things like that. We did have a strong response rate, though. Maho?
I know it's anonymous, but is there a way, for questions that might be confusing, is there a way to reach back and dig deeper if they didn't provide information? I'm mostly having trouble with page 12. Even though the, the average for school safety is pretty high, I still feel like some of those answers, I was like, are these people joking or is real concern particularly like the fact that for to, question number five, for example, to what extent are drugs a problem at your child's school? That 15 people answered a tremendous problem. I'm like, what? Like, are people, is there something we're not aware of? Or is someone joking? Because I, I, six-year-old smoking pot in the bathroom, I don't think this is something we're dealing with. So what is this about?
I can, I can say categorically, we have not dealt with drug use that.
I figured there's just.
Yeah. So I don't know what's behind that. If that's, if that's some user error with the survey or, or a language barrier despite the translations or what might be behind that. That's, that's a great point and a, and a good caveat.
Yeah, just, just because. Sorry, it wasn't just that question, but a couple of them, I was like, oh, like, how difficult is it to get help from an adult if they're being bullied? And that 14 would have said quite difficult. Like, yes, it makes me wonder, like, are some kids struggling and are they feeling like they're not getting help? Or, or is it, as you say, just user error? And I'm not sure if there's a way to reach back anonymously, like, hey, would, do you need help? Do you, would you like to elaborate? Or I don't know if they, if, if these kinds of responses got comments at the end. I mean, overall, the marks were very high, but just the fact that there were some that, that seem, that seemed to have concerns that sound serious, at least on paper. Feel like it's worth, I don't know. It, it troubled me a little bit there. But yes, glad to know that drugs are not a problem in the school. No, they could be, Ben.
Well, yeah. No, that, that's yeah, we don't put any credence to that one, but that's an excellent suggestion, Maho. And yeah, we will certainly follow up. I don't, I don't know the technology of how we can reach back to particular responses, but we might be able to sort of triangulate or just reach back out on a particular topic.
Michael, I will, I will say that last year, Margarita and I did an overview, a very quick overview of the translations to Spanish. And so maybe there's an idea for the future, Maho and, and, and whoever takes Maho's role on the board. But there's an opportunity to look at some of that language because as, even as a Spanish speaker, some of those questions were confusing.
Yeah, and I, I'm wondering, like, other families who, who might not, their, their dominant language or native language might not be English or Spanish, right? And also thinking about that.
Excellent points.
One last quick question, one question, one comment. The free form responses that are at the end, those were essentially the questions that you all were able to free form for the school, on behalf of the school, right? The questions that were about remote learning, etc. There's no opportunity for parents to volunteer their own kind of free form. The questions that were about remote learning, etc. There's no opportunity for parents to volunteer their own kind of free form uh open responses.
We do, we do have some free forum comments, I believe.
I'm missing, I'm missing it. Okay, great. I don't know why I'm not seeing it in the record. Anyway, I was always asking out of curiosity, Steve, if there's anything that could be repurposed, either for fundraising materials or for recruitment materials. Uh, you know, a pity quote or two is always a good thing to have. Um and then the other kind of just a suggestion, and it's really for the remaining members of the Education Accountability Committee to, you know, if you want to do a deeper dive into this during the next meeting, maybe bring that up beforehand with with everybody. But um overall, it looks like the results are. Uh there's nothing really surprising here that you might want to dig deeper on, but I'll leave that up to everybody.
Yeah, I think that would be great if we dug into this a little bit um in our next session.
Great. Thank you. So we'll we'll loop her back around to this topic uh at at that committee meeting and then if 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 necessary, next month. We um we also, uh just as the last sort of highlight to share, um just wrapped up the last round of step. So I didn't have a pre-read on this and I don't have the full, full report for you. I think this is probably also something for the Education Committee to to break down. Um but I just, in terms of a top level highlight, I think it is a a highlight. So I wanted to uh to give, we'll call it a preview, and then we will similarly go back into into more detail. Delly Ness, this is, this is really your highlight. Do you want to interpret these for us?
Um so we saw tons of growth this um last uh round of step, which is really exciting. Um so seventy-two percent of our students grew to a two or more step levels this round. Forty-seven percent grew three or more levels in English. Um in Spanish, uh sixty-two percent of students grew two um step levels. Um and thirty-five percent grew three or more levels. Um so very, very excited um to see the amount of growth in this last round. Um and want to shout out all of my school leaders and instructional team, our teachers um for just the astounding amount of effort and work that they have put in order for us um to see this growth that we've seen this year. So very excited.
Awesome. Sorry, just to come up. I think that's awesome, especially in a year like this. I assume you guys just wrapped this, you all just wrapped this up or are probably still doing some makeups, maybe. I think this is huge and thank you for also including the like three plus levels, just to give us a context of who's on the edge and, you know, if we have a regular school year and do our interventions, what we could expect. Um hopefully getting, you know, everyone to move three plus levels. Um and then what I think would be super helpful for the Education Committee is just looking at absolute uh data in terms of like, so this is really great in terms of growth. And this year like this, absolutely essential, but what is the, you know, grade level correlation? How are we doing there, especially from where kids came in? That'd be great.
Right. Yeah, and and I know, I mean, just in glancing at the grade level breakdowns that we did have, I know that the trend of our second grade students continuing to show high growth has continued, um especially in English. But um you're right, we want to, whenever possible, be looking through the lens of absolute and growth and different grade levels and different subgroups. So uh we will, we will be sharing that deep dive, but I I couldn't let the highlights pass without at least putting this in. I think we we were just getting this yesterday, so.
Look, I mean, the the these steps deserve recognition. That's exactly the point, Michael, but when when you engage in a complicated model and you're developing a a small school, you know, there are a few things you have to and this is a a big one of them, so I'm glad we get to highlight this. But I think that Emily is right. At a certain level, we also want to know where we are in the stages of getting to grade level. And uh and we know the situation of our students and what we're trying to achieve with them. And uh and it's it's a double-edged sword, right? You try to do a lot with the with these kids, so. I I I think it makes sense to show the 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 whole result.
Yep. We will, we will absolutely be coming back to that uh to be continued. Uh and as we share out uh more details about the interventions and the the investments that are planned uh for the year ahead, um I guess I just want to highlight that the decision to uh adopt step and step Espanol just continues to pay off. Uh because i- it's allowed our teachers to target uh specific learning needs in such a granular way and given us a new vocabulary across the instructional leadership team. So, you know, we're glad we met today. Roberto will share more later, but we met today with the New Schools Venture Fund um who uh helped link us up with Bellwether Partners uh who helped us kind of think about uh the the push for literacy this year. And it's just, you know, there were a lot of pumps in the road, but there were also some pieces that really kind of came together nicely uh with Delly Ness's leadership.
Just it, one small comment, i- i- in my job, I I I've got to see a lot of different schools and school districts around the country and I'm kind of just uh disheartened by how many have just given up on this year and they're not assessing anything. Um and the fact that you guys are doing map and step and I mean, it really is uh a great testament to how seriously you take student achievement, student growth, and that you didn't just write off this year like so many schools and school districts.
Thank you, Thrones.
Yes, thank you. All right, so with that preview, uh we will absolutely come back to the full breakdown. And uh that sort of concludes my updates unless anyone else has questions either about what we just went over or about anything that was shared in the uh in the pre-read. I see a thumbs up.
One quick question, I am, I'm still up because I'm stitching, but could we, um I don't know if it's okay to talk about here, and if it's not, that's completely fine. Um the, do you have any idea when the ten kid, the ten students that may may or may not be retained, when those decisions will be finalized? I'm assuming that the step data probably um influenced that, and I'm just kind of wondering what the spread is for those across the grades.
Um so we have, the majority of those are first current first grade students um going up to second grade um that are on that retention um bubble. Um about four of those have been confirmed already that will be retained. And then the rest, we're also waiting to see um how they perform after summer school um to see if we see some growth there and then reconvening with the parents um after that. We're also waiting to see, there's, there's some of those students who are in the midst of um a possible IEP evaluation would would also um impact whether or not we retain them. And that's a little bit more of a complicated process because um we're at the mercy of the CSE, the DOE and and their timeline as well. But we're hoping to have those decisions done um by mid-July um and meeting with the parents at that point, um who are still a question mark in terms of retention.
Got it. Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you. Speaking of parents, uh I think we've been joined by a couple, couple more, at least one more parent and another member of the public who might be a parent. So welcome. Uh this is our monthly board meeting and we always have a time for public comments uh at the end of the meeting. So if you'd like to share any thoughts or questions, uh please stick around. You can also enter a question or a comment in the chat or the Q and A. Gabrielle, would you like to move on to new business?
Yes, I will go continue to have you all lead on that. I know we have a few, a couple of contract votes and then a policy.
Yes. Um so, uh Roberto, would you mind? I didn't tell you, I was asking you to do this, but would you mind introducing uh this vote?
Yeah, thank you. Uh this is actually a contract that we discussed before. BBI is our project management team that is overseeing the feasibility study of um the school's growth into additional space in the physical plant. Uh that physical space potentially could include the bank, could include some additional space behind the existing building. But again, we're not going to know anything until we do the study. But in addition to that, we also come back to the board to discuss a bit of an increase in the original contract because we also asked uh DBI to perform the services for the vetting of the architectural firms that would be brought into into the feasibility study. Um Bryce Beckwith, amazing guy, did a great job of bringing us some very strong candidates. And then, of course, there's the scoring of those proposals. And so part of our due diligence was to ensure that we had a very fair and balanced interview process, due diligence process and scoring. And it's that extra work that increased the original contract. And we reported this to our finance committee uh just last evening.
So the contract itself uh was circulated in the pre reads. Um any questions or comments? Or discussion?
Nothing from here. I don't think, um David, is there anything, I don't think we raised, there's anything raised in the finance committee necessarily about this.
No, I mean, right now, we we're exploring all avenues we can to make sure that we have the uh the capacity to handle the grades we need to handle while we pursue, you know, the next steps. So this this is how we're doing that.
I don't want to overstep or overpromise, and and I didn't tell Michael I was going to say this, but early uh readings of studies that have already been done, just big studies, the firm has determined that we do indeed have the room. We just have to get the permits and we have to make sure that everything works, but we're very confident that the existing physical plan will be able to fit grades four and five.
Yeah, and and look, I I I I I think that that's the ideal situation, but we won't know without making sure we get these studies done. And uh we're exploring all avenues to make sure we have the room and the capacity to keep uh everyone moving through Deep Academy.
Yep.
Okay, uh I think that we are then ready to take a vote. Uh I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the DBI contract as written. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Thanks, everyone. Motion's passed.
Thank you all. The next uh contract is a renewal of a service contract uh with our partner uh called Ed Ops. Um Ed Ops is a national firm that works with many different charter schools. We have relied on them for help with uh the dashboards that we send you with the uh with analysis of uh of formative uh test data as they come in, especially the NWEA map data. So you've seen some of their work in those reports. They also, behind the scenes, uh take a lot off of my plate and the ops teams played in terms of state data reporting, which is just a constant uh compliance need. Uh you know, they spend the time keeping up on all the requirements. They're in tune with our student information system. So when this time of year comes around and all the attendance data and all the certification data and all that kind of information is needed, uh we can work with them and they can just handle it. Um the other thing that we're hoping to work with them on this coming year and as part of this is uh help with uh implementing a program called Clever, which uh allows different kinds of education software to sort of auto populate in in speak to our student information system so that there's not a lot of manual uploading of rosters, which gets old after about the fifth or sixth software program you're trying to do that with. Uh and of course, also introduces the the possibility for error. Um so we've been pleased with this partnership. We have a three-person team. We meet with them weekly. Um we make sure all these projects are are on track. And um so this was their bid uh or their proposal for the new year, which was also anticipated in uh in the annual budget that we passed last month. So I'd be happy to take any questions on this one. This one was also in uh in the pre-read email.
Um quick question, Michael. Other than the clever implementation, is there anything new, any kind of like new services that there are additional to what they've already provided us this year?
No, it's generally the, just a continuation.
Okay. Any other questions from the group before we take a vote? No? Okay. Uh then I will go ahead and make a motion to approve uh the Ed Ops contract as written. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Finally, uh shared a a set of small, but I think important uh policy adjustments uh that would become part of our staff handbook. Um I, next month, uh I think we will need to have a conversation about a few more kinds of policy changes as we get ready to to expand our team. Just trying to pick up on lessons learned from this past year and and do just one whole batch of of updates. Um but for reasons of timeline, I wanted to get out ahead of of this one. And so uh you'll, you see the sort of memo in the pre reads, uh but essentially, we're making some adjustments um to the the work time policies that relate not to our teachers or our instructional uh calendar year staff, but to the twelve-month staff, the leadership team, the operations team, uh the folks who are here full-time uh year-round to work a a little bit of a different schedule from the teachers. Essentially, a couple of goals behind this, we'd like to get our hard-working team a little bit more rest. They need it, they deserve it, and in doing so, we want to also be better at coordinating our time away. Uh because uh the the work over the summer is hard to do if it's um if it's sort of one leader is out this week and another leader is out the next week. We we go into teacher training not having been fully synced up. Uh we sort of learned that lesson last summer, and so we're trying to adjust uh and and uh make sure that we're kind of coordinating the time that folks take off. Uh the other motivation here is just, you know, continuing to make sure that we're competitive uh in the market as regards, you know, all of our compensation. And so this brings us, we were a little low on the amount of paid time off that we had. And I think there's no reason why we, why we should be. Uh it's hard enough to convince our leaders to actually take off time when they have time off on the calendar. But uh I do think that it's it's important that as we're hiring people from all these other schools and networks that we can say, yeah, we're we're sort of at the industry norm for for this type of a benefit. So specifically, what you see outlined there is for our instructional team, having some extended um holidays, that is to say, paid time off that is not movable. Uh but saying we're all gonna be, or they all are going to be off for that period uh the week of July fourth. Um the operations team will not have that extra time off, but will have some more movable kind of floating days um because they have a lot to be doing in in the building during during the summer. Uh they they also will have, um you know, a the chance to take a break. It just doesn't need to be synced up in that same way. Instead of a four-day work week during the summer with sort of summer Friday. Instead of a four day work week during the summer with sort of summer Fridays, we will have a five day work week. In some cases, that Friday might be remote. But there's a lot of work to do in the summer, and this is just a good way to kind of normalize that. And then a couple of other small changes, there's a day shortly after President's Day that would switch from being a vacation or a holiday rather to a training day for leaders. So we can be intentional about our leading, leader training as well as our teacher training. And then finally, we don't know how likely this is, but if we end up offering any kind of student facing programming during spring break, we're building in some flexibility that if we let them know by December 1st, there may be a leader or two who needs to work during that time in exchange for other time off. So some of you, you know, have been into these details before with other schools. All of you, I'm sure, have thought about these kind of policies before, but this was what I thought made, made sense as a way to try to, you know, maximize our impact. And, and, you know, Delly Ness, of course, has given this a ton of thought and, and I appreciate that. So we, we discussed this also with the finance committee last night, but if anybody has questions or comments, I'd be happy to talk it over.
Can I ask a quick, a couple of quick questions? Okay, so the, the extended holidays, we're looking at like July 5 through 9, everyone is out. Or instructional leaders are out with non-movable PTO.
Right.
And what does that, do you have, or and maybe this can be shared separately? Like an analysis of what it was last year to what it is this year, both in terms of total, but also like flexible to non-flexible? I don't know.
Yeah.
Now, if they can be shared.
So in terms of so everyone gets sort of the school holidays off, right? But in addition to that, there had been about 10 days that 12 month employees would get. And, and we had some managerial discretion. So last year, it was about five days that we coordinated on and another five that were sort of movable with your manager would need to approve, but they would be flexible. This year, we've added four to five days, depending on how you count. And there's still only five that are flexible, but now there's nine or 10 that are fixed.
Great. And then the five day work week prior, were you doing a Monday through Thursday work week with Friday off, off?
Right.
Great. And are you, you said some Fridays might be remote. Are you looking at a, like a 2:00 PM kind of end, or are you not? Right there yet? Sorry to put you
No, that's okay. This is where I say that's manager's discretion. Again, I will say, in, in reality, the challenge with our instructional leaders is to get them to take a break.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but if Delly Ness calls an early summer afternoon, she's not going to get any brief from me.
Great.
Then if work's going to get done.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we take a vote? Looks like no. Okay, then I will make a motion to, to approve these revisions to work time policies for the instructional leaders. Second?
Second.
Okay, great. Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move into the committee reports, starting with the finance committee, and I will turn that over to David and Bob to lead.
Well, Bob, do you want to walk us through some of the May financials? Bob on this call?
Yeah, sorry, I just had to move away from a window. The glare was actually pretty bad. So, no, I, material changes to the financial forecast. Michael, can I have access to share my screen?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thanks. All right, so the financial graphs are very much in line, I think, with how we've been running historically over the past few months. We can touch days of cash. Here is the only ratio where we, we're currently not meeting the state metric. We are a little bit low on this and we'll provide some context and detail behind that later. But your current ratio, the total margin debt to asset ratio, again, continue to look very strong against our financial benchmarks. On the enrollment side, we, we did submit our final enrollment in April, so there has not been any changes to these figures over the last two months. We do submit what is known as a reconciliation invoice after the final day of school over the summer, where we can account for any final adjustments, but these numbers have continued to remain static over the last two months. You'll see again, very, very flat movements that has really stabilized, I think, kind of since January, February. Budget versus actual, we have $5.7 million in revenue against 6.3 budgeted. So we're running very much in line considering these financials are as of May and we're close to the end of the year. All told, on the net surplus side, year to date, we have a $640,000 surplus against a budgeted surplus of $20,000. The number is high for a number of reasons, primarily the PPP forgiveness that we did receive a few months back, no cuts to per pupil and Supplemental Cares Act funding provided by the feds that has flown through the Department of Education. All told, we do anticipate an annual surplus that will be like a book surplus of about $540,000, which is very strong for a school in its second year. Um, I, I did just want to take a note. Our cash flow projection is, is a little tight right now. We've, are waiting on a handful of payments for some donations and federal grant claims that are pending at the state. So, you know, we are being proactive in managing this. We talked through it with the finance committee meeting and, you know, we do, we do have a plan to make sure we can get through the end of the year. Our next per pupil payments will be coming on the first or second business day of July and going forward with our forecasted surplus. This should be the last time organizationally, I think we're in a little bit of a tight cash position. On the balance sheet, we closed the month with a little bit more than $300,000 of cash on hand. You will see here that there is a spike in the accounts receivable, almost double of where we closed last year. This is primarily the result of the school kind of loaning money to cover facility related expenses to friends of leap. So with this money kind of out the door, I, I think that is probably the primary driver of the kind of cash crunch that we're currently in. All that to be said, fixed assets obviously ticked up a hair just because we are making significant like capital investments, I think, kind of related to the facility. Current liabilities, again, I just naturally, I think we're seeing some accounts payable increases. And then the deferred revenue portion here will be zeroed out at the end of the year. It's just an accounting function for the way our revenue flows. And then the good news, we've managed to eliminate this one large liability for the PPP loan. So that is generating some balance sheet, like very strong balance sheet ratios for the school. That being said, all in, our equity balance last year was this $144,000 figure. The state pays a lot of attention to this, so year to date equity has actually gone up to just shy of $800,000. So we do continue to look very strong there. And really, I think the, the only change on the expense side from what we presented to you all last month was we just accounted for the start of the assistant principal for one month that Michael mentioned earlier. So that's really the only staffing or change that we've seen month over month.
Thanks a lot, Bob.
Sure.
Yeah, like, like Bob pointed out, I think that the, the primary things that we see are, are reasonably reasonably good stewardship by our management team and a forgiveness of $600,000. You know, and, and those things add up. So, so what we're looking at is a, is a reasonably good situation with a tight cash situation. And I think that comes from adding staff before the fiscal year renewed, but also late payments coming in from our grantors. And, you know, between those two things, we're trying to bulk up coming into the new year and we're waiting on some delayed payments that I think will all even out in the end. The biggest concern I think we've seen is that debt to asset ratio, which we believe will balance out as long as we continue to account properly. So I, I, I think we're seeing a timing of payments issue that goes away as the school continues to add students and, and grow. And I think Bob said that this should be the last time we would see such cash growth. That's probably what he was talking about. So, so I think that, you know, we're on the right track. And thanks, guys.
Thank you both. Any questions on the financials?
Gabrielle, if I might add one point, we had a really good meeting today with the New School Venture Fund. And it was a meeting that was convened by Antonio Tapia. He's our program officer and you know, while we, we did an extraordinary ask of them to advance us the monies to be able to make up for the shortfall, we are, it's more important that we are in a milestone situation. We've been funded by this organization now five years to the tune of about $850,000. This organization has seen and, and recognized today, Delly Ness and Michael and, and their, and our stewardship from the very beginning. And in Michael, in, in Antonio's own words, saying, you know, I can always count on Leap to be super organized and present your case so well. And so that's why these asks are not hard asks to ask a foundation to advance their funding. We look forward to those kinds of continuing relationships and development. And because of this nice branding relationship with New School Venture Fund, the future could be very good for us with groups like Charter School Growth Fund, the Walton Family Foundation, and among others. But this is a milestone moment because it also is our last payment. And it's, it, it's, it's going to be marked by being able to say, you know, we did what we set out to do. And New School Venture Fund has been promoting us and talked about us. So I just wanted to say thanks to Michael and Delly Ness for putting the report together. And we had a great, great meeting this morning.
Yeah, it really has been a pivotal relationship and we're, we're so grateful to the New Schools Venture Fund. Hope to have a chance to work with them again in the future, but it's, it, it has meant a lot to us.
Thank you both for that. I'm excited to hear in the future how that shapes up. Thank you, Roberto. Okay. Executive Committee, not much to report here, other than we will, Charles and David and I, and I'll connect with you offline, Charles and David, about this. Be doing our annual evaluations of the boards to employees. Michael and Roberto will need to get that done before the July meeting for sure. So David and Charles, I'll connect with you about that following the meeting, but I definitely want to, now that I'm back from last week, want to have that taken care of before I exit the role here. But can continue to help on that, obviously. After the fact as well. So that's just a heads up. The academic and accountability committee, we met most recently and talked through some of the step data again, as well as our ongoing DEI work. And we did break apart per the board's request at our last meeting, a little bit, the, a bit of the reframing of the, not reframing, but the revision of the staff model that we discussed in our last meeting in a little bit more of a chartered form that I believe was also part of the pre reads. Am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Emily, I know you weren't able to make the last meeting. Do you have any staffing related questions after looking over the, the pre read?
No, thank you.
I think that is basically the extent of it. I think for our next, for the next meeting, again, I think a dive into the family survey results and maybe taking a bit more look at the absolute data for, for staff would be two good points of focus.
Very good.
Okay. Board norms and development, we will go ahead and start with our newest prospective member, David Estrada, who was kind enough to come to our board meeting last month and give an intro of himself. I recirculated David's info to the board and made sure we checked in and want to say that we are very excited and, and proud to have you join us in an official capacity tonight. David or Roberto or Michael, is there anything you want to say before we go on ahead and vote David on to the board officially?
I just want to say that as head of the BID, of the Business Improvement District, David throws a great street party.
That's right. David, we're excited to have you.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to be here. And by force of habit, I had to stop raising my hand and voting, reminding myself I wasn't a board member until, until something official happens. But I'm just happy to help and support this mission. I'm, I'm the more I learn, the more I'm impressed and happy with your work, but I'd like to be a part of it. Thank you.
Well, it's good practice, David. So continue to, continue to do that. I will take the official vote now and I'll just make a couple of logistical points around, around David's, the next steps for you. But I'll go ahead and make a motion to vote to approve David Estrada as a LEAP board member. May I have a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Welcome aboard, David. We're so, so excited to have you. We can't wait to have you contribute in all, all of the ways that you can, particularly with the lens on Sunset Park and strengthening ties we have in the community. We're, we're very, very excited for that and your general enthusiasm and passion for the school so far. And, and pretty soon you'll be able to visit it regularly and, you know, as long as we're away from everybody at all times, it'll be, it'll be great. Michael will follow up with you. There is a not insubstantial amount of paperwork that has to be filled out and sent to the State Education Department before you can be officially approved by them. It doesn't tend to take them too long after we send that in. It involves a background check, record, academic records, things like that. It just is important for you to be able to get that to us as soon as we can so we can send it to them and get their approval. And once we have their official approval, that's when you, your vote officially counts. So, you know, again, don't, don't be shy about continuing to, to come and raise your hand and at least opine. But you can't, your vote won't officially count until you're, you're a member per the approval letter from NICE Ed. But the sooner you get the paperwork in, the sooner that happens.
Right. So I'll be sending that right away, David.
Thank you so much, Michael. And we will also add you, add, I don't know if Michael's already done this, but provide you with a LEAP Gmail address. That is where you will receive all of your meeting invitations and all of your pre reads moving forward. It's just kind of a best practice within charter schools to have a dedicated email address that's school specific for privacy related, you know, concerns.
Privacy insanity. Thank you.
Privacy insanity. Yeah, separate things. Privacy insanity. Yes, of course. Thanks. The pre-reads usually go out on Thursday night for meetings that happen on Tuesday. And I will, at this point, put you on with your personal email address to the board meeting invitations, but we'll switch that out for your LEAP address as soon as possible, just so you can kind of have some holds on your calendars.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Of course. Thank you. Welcome. Bienvenido. Some additional items. We, we have, we are currently talking to a potential new candidate for a membership who's a charter operations leader. My goodness, Alejandro Galindes?
Montoya.
Montoya. Galindes is a board member for my job. That's our, one of our, okay, so that's. Pardon me. I'm speaking to him tomorrow. He has a really strong operations background, I think could be a really good asset to the team. I'm sure he has also dabbled on, because of ops and finance, kind of talk to each other constantly, has a good additional financial mind that can contribute to the committee, hopefully. He seems extremely excited about the prospect of joining the board. Both Michael and Roberto have already spoken to him. Would you guys like to share any initial perspective on Alejandro?
Yes, I mean, I'll be brief, but I would say that this is someone who's worked both with networks and scaling individual charters and standalone charter schools, has also had some exposure to the renewal and an authorizer-facing world. And, you know, has a lot of enthusiasm for our mission. I think that, you know, as we think about the needs on the board, having more folks who know the world of charter schools is going to be important. And so, you know, I'm glad that we're going to meet and consider Alejandro. And then I think we're also, you know, continuing to talk to a range of possible candidates for different stages of the process.
Thanks, Michael. Any other, any additional thoughts, Roberto?
Right man, and somebody that I think understands operational issues very well from the ground up. You know, I'm sure he'll do what I like and will, will accept it.
I think having an ops person on board is a really strong move, particularly, again, going into a testing year, going into future years of physical expansion, grade expansion. I think it'll certainly be helpful. So I will let you know what happens after that call and I'll circulate Alejandro's resume after that as well. But he seems very excited and very willing to jump right in, so hopefully that will work out well. And as Michael put in the, as the team put in the board notes, we're still, still seeing a need. I know Roberto and Michael have emphasized this from the beginning for a bilingual education expert to serve on the board, so we will all continue to tap our networks to try to find that person. It's, you know, a tough sort of niche field, I know. And again, it may be somebody who, you know, we may have to continue to have come in remotely once we go back to being in person, depending on where they are, but I think it would be a tremendously helpful thing. And I know that it's been somebody that we've been looking for for quite a bit, so. If you happen to turn up in your professional or personal lives connections to bilingual education experts, particularly at the elementary level, I did speak to someone who provides bilingual ed and does a lot of professional development work, but she emphasized, she stressed that she felt sort of unqualified in a sense, not unqualified, but was hesitant to, to commit because a lot of her work was in middle schools and high schools. I'm going to see if I can have another conversation with her and if she might be able to expand her networks for us as well.
Just as an aside, Gabrielle, I did reach back to my Notre Dame contacts and a professor, Sotipul Balagarcia, who's now in Chicago, suggested I contact one of her old friends, who's a professor of dual-language instruction here in Hunter College. So she has sent her a note about our school and I have sent her a note about our school. So I'm a dog with a bone here and going after people that can be very helpful to us. And, 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 and there's going to be people like that as well. I'm also speaking to people like Elizabeth Howard, among other notable scholars. She's in Connecticut as a way of being able to drum up additional names. And again, we're not doing this willy-nilly. We really want to have strong, strong scholarship on our board and happy to do that.
Thank you, Roberto. Um, I think as we've discussed previously, I'll just say again, of course, this is my last official board meeting as board chair. You will have me until June 30th and formally and possibly informally afterward again for help with evaluations and just kind of, if for any reason you want to solicit my opinion, you are welcome. I think you all have my number and please don't lose it. On the logistics of this, I think that in terms of things that I do that can be carried out either in committee meetings or, you know, via online collaboration, I think the most important of these is helping Michael put an agenda together for each month's meetings. I've put together a template that I use, that I've used in my check-ins with both Michael and Roberto over the course of the years that basically just follows the order of the board meeting and outlines what the votes are needed for the next meeting, what the pre-reads should consist of related to that, and any kind of notes or questions. I think that's an example of something that I do, can be done in other ways in the interim as we continue to look for a new board chair, which is work that I will also continue to look. I will, even when I'm not here, I'm committed to helping in that search. But I think it's important for that work to continue and for it to be collaborative. So even if, you know, it happens during the committee meeting, sometimes I know the scheduling of those can be a little strange in terms of like the staggering and the amount of time that happens, you know, before the meeting itself. For example, the finance committee tends to not meet until the day before the board meeting and would need to kind of get out ahead of agenda items. Have time, but it could be something that's just a standing agenda document, maybe on Google Docs that you all could collaborate on and Michael sends out, you know, saying, hey, can you make sure to add the items or can we chat about this? In terms of other logistics, I, on our calendar, have set up the board meeting invite. Ever been the originator of the calendar events that are both of the board meetings and the committee meeting, those invitations? But they are set up at this point, I believe, so that any, anyone who's on the invite list can change them. So if, if someone can pick up that scheduling, it would be great if some, if folks on the board could do that versus leaving that to the people at the school level. And of course, you can just kind of cancel out those invitations and originate new ones if you want. I will make sure that all of the documents that I have that, for, if for any reason, I think they only live on my hard drive, I will make, and they're able to be accessible to everybody here. I will put that into the board portion of the school's Google Drive. Anything that's private, I will just talk to the executive committee about sharing those. But I want to make sure that, one way or another, the documents that I have, I don't know that there's anything that only I have at this point, but I want to make sure that the documents get to the people they need to get to as I move on. I will need to send an official written resignation to Michael with my end date. I will do that probably tomorrow. I also will need to probably have a separate conversation with the folks at NICE Ed about that. And Michael, I can circle back with you about what that should look like offline. And again, I will continue to help look for a new chair after June 30th. But highly encourage everybody here to, to try to do the same. I think it would certainly be helpful for that person to have had some background in charter board work or even charter leadership work if possible. And we've got, we also, I want everyone to remember that we have Empire Consulting as a resource for continuing to both, you know, tap into possible candidate pools for those leaders as well as just to come and, you know, facilitate or provide any kind of additional support while, you know, we look to fill both the, the chair and the vice chair slots. On a last note, I want to emphasize again what a complete honor it has been to do this work with all of you for three years, two years officially, three years, if you count the sort of pre, pre-planning year. And what an amazing thing it has been to get, help get the school off the ground, contribute in any, you know, small way to the success of the vision that Roberto and Michael Delly Ness have started out with. And I really will not be out of touch. I so wish that the rest of my life would enable me to continue to do this work. And I have absolutely nothing but confidence in the brains and talent and passion of the people on this team to continue that work. I am by no means indispensable. And I think that even until you find the person to technically run these meetings and technically send out the, the agenda and all of the paperwork, you will be able to more than fill the void with everything that you're able to contribute and have contributed so far. So thank you so much for making this an incredible experience.
Thank you, Gabrielle. And pardon me if I just jump right in here, but I was going through my text messages. You agreed to be our board chair of a prospective charter school on July the 5th, 2018 at 1:32 PM. And it has been an action-packed three years and change since then. I know that your role has been intense at times, probably felt thankless at times, but every kid who comes into our school has benefited, so thank you.
It's been an honor.
Gabrielle was one of the first persons that I reached out to when I was scouring the tree, looking for people to support us. And so there was a lot of wisdom and a lot of energy and a lot of ganas that you brought to the table. And I will always be grateful for it. Muchas gracias.
Y nada.
Just echo that, you know, I, I know I've already told you, but, you know, I don't know how we'll do without you. And I think you've kept us all honest and, and I really appreciate having met you and worked with you.
Thank you. You'll do it very well.
The, the board got together and brought you a little token, a very small token of our appreciation. A little gift we're going to send you, Gabrielle. But I just, how do you say, zapatos grande? Is that a word? Is that a term? I don't, I don't know what we're going to do without you. And just as Michael said, you know, you've, you've, you launched this school and every student and every family now currently and in the future owes you a debt of gratitude. And the work you've put in over the past 15 months during COVID, I mean, just since I've been on the board. And it's really remarkable and you were, did it, you're unflappable. And I don't know what we're going to do without you, but thank you.
And I just want to express, Gabrielle, my, my gratitude towards you and just share that it has been wonderful and a great example for me to see a fellow Latina leader leading this board. So thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you. I will miss you all very much, but I will not be out of your world just yet, so.
Can't let them all, right?
All right. So I think that we are now at the public comments portion of our time. Do we have any members of the public that want to contribute a comment or a question?
I'm going to go in order based on the names on my screen. Ms. Woods, would you like to share any comments? Oops, I think we just lost her. Daisy, would you like to share any comments?
No, not today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Woods, I see your name again. Would you like to say anything?
No, I'm traveling, so thank you.
Okay, thanks. Judge Farber, would you like to say anything?
It's Lauren, please. And no, I'm just listening today. Thank you so much and, and congratulations to the new member. And thank you so much for all the service that all of you, you know, all of you have done. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Lauren. Melody, welcome.
Hi. So I just want to say thank you to Gabrielle and welcome aboard to David Estrada.
Thank you so much. And I, I hope I don't give anything away if I say that I don't think we mentioned some ongoing conversations with a potential parent representative for the board. So we, I think we'll have more of an update on that for our next meeting. But thank you to everybody who's, who's been with us. It's, it's great to have you in the meeting. Melody, we took your note and shared this link on ClassTag. Next time we'll do it with even, even more of a notice, but we want, definitely want to keep this as a true public meeting for our school community. If I may, before we adjourn, I forgot to point out in, in the highlights or in the, in the title slide, that our kids actually got to have some fun. We had our field day and we saw our kids joyfully bouncing around in burlap sacks and hula hoops and balls and running around with each other. Some of our remote learners who had been behind a computer screen from us all year showed up in person. Saw, we had some, some very sweet reunions between friends and it was really a great day. And so I also want to just commend our staff who put that event together. And all the, I think, 24 parent volunteers who turned out. We're excited to get back to concerts and field days and field trips and all those kinds of normal joyful school activities as we get into a new year. But we got a little, a little foretaste of that last week. So thanks to everybody who. Yeah.
All right. All right, everyone. Thank you again for your time tonight, for your time every night that you've ever put into this work because it's not easy work and you're not getting paid to do it. And you do it because you feel really strongly about giving opportunities to kids who don't always get them. And in this case, a little bit of a passport to the world that they may not have had otherwise by becoming known. Which is something that, you know, we tend to overlook in some of the ways that we talk about, you know, achievement, et cetera. But what a gift it is to be able to communicate with other people in more than just one language. And I can't wait to watch these kids soar. And I highly encourage all of you, once the building is back open and we've got a little bits of, a little bit more settled, maybe not quite in September, maybe starting in October, to go on ahead and visit the school. I know at some point we'll be back to, you know, board meetings in person, but go, go other times, go for events, sit in on class. There's really nothing more magical than watching kids learn. I really highly recommend getting in a classroom where that's happening and you can, you can feel it happening. It's, it gives you a lot of hope and it definitely, for those days where you get tired or frustrated, it helps fill that tank. So that's my plug for going in and experiencing it. All right. With all that said, I will go ahead. It's 7:30. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting officially. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Gabrielle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle.
Thank you.